Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the five, the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
He is not. Call this medium independent school district 544 to order. Clerk? Do you want to establish a form?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Limpke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present and Stephen Biggessa is absent.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda has passed. Moving on to reports, we have Derek Abrams here to talk about winter sports update.
Winter's still going on. Another good topic today.
The ongoing report.
Alright. Very successful winter season, I believe, in multiple ways. I have a report for you here that gets into some of the numbers. I'll add a little bit to that. The front side, and I think everybody got that, the front side just gives us our numbers for the past three years. Again, very consistent, which is good because our high school numbers, while our district numbers are going up, our high school numbers are going down. This is the smaller classes that we've had and they're all coming through now and which has been reflected, which I'll touch on in a second with changing our class for a couple of sports as well. But, so even though our numbers have gone down and we're graduating classes that are around are just under 150 now versus the 200 we did a few years ago. Our numbers are so good. Boys basketball is up, girls basketball, pretty much everything's up or very consistent within that. You know, when you look at things like figure skating and gymnastics, that starts a long time ago. That's not something someone just suddenly goes out for in high school. So that's kind of where we're at, but even, you know, boys hockey, girls hockey, you can see all the way down the list that we're right at or a little bit above. Overall, we had 244 students out of maybe 600 that participated in just a winter sport. And that's just grades nine through 12, and that's also just athletics. We had at least 85 more. I did some quick counts. They register a little bit different and some things, so I did a quick count on that. It's probably closer to 100, but we also have some kids that repeat and do other activities. When you add in speech, one act play, the fall musical that was in November, robotics, knowledge bowl, math league, those are full. I mean, we are getting great numbers in all of those things. And when you look at our numbers compared to the other schools in the CLC which have 12, 13, 14, Brainerd has 1,600 students in their building, our numbers are right there. So that we have a much higher percentage. I looked at it very quickly. About 65% of our students were involved in some kind of activity just this winter alone, which is a very high percentage. I know there's schools that look to get 40%. I know they look to get 30% to 40% as their goal of multi-sport athletes. Ours right now is about 75%. So these kids aren't just playing one sport. Very impressive what they do and how busy they are and how active they are. And then to top that off, throughout all of our sports, we're on the top academically as well. Gymnastics got silver. Girls hockey won the section. Girls basketball did. And, is there anyone? I believe there's one more. But, so not only were they section champions or did very well out there, they're also academic champions. So they're doing the work in the classroom and out on the courts and fields and rinks. So very impressive, very happy with the results. A lot of individual accomplishments. You can look through, almost every single week, we have a CLC athlete of the week. That's grown tremendously both because of the talent that we have out there, these kids accomplishing some good things in our conference games, but also credit to our coaches that are making sure they're getting those kids out there. They're sending them into the CLC and the CLC is recognizing Fergus for what our athletes are doing. So you can look through that list. Again, all conference, I'll go through, the ones in bold were the all-conference selections. The ones with honorable mention, I also put those on there. Ashley Fraun in gymnastics, honorable mention, the all-round. Tucker Hankis, Barrett Skogan in Nordic ski. Boys swimming, both of our divers. Caleb Newborn, Evan Erlinson earned honorable mention with Tyler Hanson, Sawyer Vadava getting an honorable mention. Very difficult to do in swimming, great conference that we're in. Boys hockey, Declan Young and Isaac Olgren with Mason Hoffman, Kane Peterson. I'll come back to girls hockey here. Boys basketball, Matt Johnson, Dominic Aguilar for all conference. Lily Pearson, Ellie Kovak for girls basketball and Karol Wynn, Isabelle Neck and Angelique Lindgren, all for speech. And girls hockey, we had Roush, Sophie Roush, Hallie Sheridan and honorable mention was Jade Zierden, Jane McKeever. And I believe that was it. I didn't have the list in front of me, so I was going off memory and writing them down here. We also had a couple of coaches of the year. Tom Uvis was the 8A assistant boys swim coach of the year. Tim Lil not only won the section coach of the year, but he won the whole Class A coach of the year for girls hockey this year. So all kinds of recognitions navigating and hopefully I didn't forget too many of them. State tournaments, again, girls, boys swimming, Caleb and Evan for diving, Tristan Trosvik, Tyler Hanson, Titus Sealan, Will Kowalski, Sean Ertman and Sawyer Vadava were all selected for, or all qualified in boys swimming. Caleb finished 7th and Evan 11th. Dustin Portellis finished 4th place in heavyweight for wrestling. Our girls hockey team made it to the state tournament and had a nice run there. The championship game was probably the first game played of the tournament at 10:00 AM with Breck, that 2-1 loss, or 2-0 loss to Breck, but they did end up as the consolation champions. And girls basketball qualified for the state tournament and this, so when asked, winter sports are done, almost. Isabelle Neck participates in the speech meet this Saturday. She qualified for poetry. So we've got one more state tournament. And then we're done. Really the only other thing to, and I'll talk about the classes here for just a split second, but the big numbers I don't have on here are middle school. Incredible. Our 8th grade, we have some numbers, but our 7th graders came out. And we had to add even more. After adding, part of it is I have to thank you for adding those middle school coaches back. Makes all the difference in the world. These kids have a focus, have a coach working with them, and we've seen that in the numbers. And boys basketball, girls basketball, football and volleyball, we had to add even another middle school coach because we had so many. We were struggling to get 40 football players out in some of the 8th grade a couple of years ago total. We had 45 7th graders. So the numbers are coming back. It's great to see they're involved in all kinds of activities, so we're very happy about that. And the last thing is, and it was in the paper now, and obviously the sections came out. Big news is we dropped a class in football, boys and girls basketball, baseball and softball. And that's all numbers. That's not something we appealed, we would never appeal to go down a class. The cutoff for say something like basketball is 590 students in your grades 9 through 12. We're at 553. So we actually have seven schools that are bigger than us in 2A. And so this will be for the next two years. I anticipate we're going to grow as the bigger classes come up. Will we back up into 3A? But we'll be 3A for football and that'll be basically the same schedule as our district football that we do already. Basketball, we're going to be in 2A now, so we'll be in there with, we're in 8 double A, which is Breckenridge, Perron, Pequot Lakes, Barnesville, all of those. And then kind of the same for baseball and softball. And that'll be for the next two years. You won't see a big change in our regular season schedule. We're still in the CLC. Our basketball teams are still playing 3A and 4A schools. We have Minnetonka on the schedule for girls basketball next year. We're not changing any of that. But come playoff time, you will see a difference in the next two years.
Hockey is also 2A then?
Nope. Hockey's always been 1A and they're staying, but the big change, the only other big change was in girls hockey, Alexander moved up to 2A.
Oh.
Yeah.
So as an example playoffs, where will we be playing? Is it Concordia?
Typically it's Concordia. I know Crookston's asked a little bit too to have it, that's been that big tournament that you see on TV.
So instead of going to St. Cloud, Hall of McCall or Concordia Morris?
Yeah, those travel. Yep. It'll be, it'll be great for our fans. It's a great tournament. If anybody has watched the 8 double A basketball tournaments, boys and girls, it is intense, it's fun, it'll be a great tournament. We have to add one more game because there's 16 teams in our section now, or 17 instead of eight. So there is one more game. But, you know, football, you won't see much of a change in the playoffs, but you will in basketball and baseball too. Baseball, we go from five teams in our baseball section to 17. So it makes a difference. It's not easy.
Lots of good teams. There's no cakewalk here. There's lots of good teams.
Very good basketball, baseball, softball and football in this area, so it won't get easier because we drop a class. It'll just get closer. Any other questions for me?
Thank you. Kirby Anderson, 544 Education Foundation Finance.
Nothing on finance today, but 544 Education Foundation will be in Thursday at noon. And there was no meeting last month. It's based script a month, so I'll be turned out and I think, will we go on?
Actually, I think, well, it's 8 to 10 inches of snow, so now I'm going to do it online and I think I'll be there now.
Okay. If you are, you are. If you're not, I'll be there.
Exactly. Thanks.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One and Activities.
So nothing new on the Activities Committee. Region One Board, just, we had some significant staffing changes and reviewed that. The requests for the different services and products is still going strong and just everything's good with Region One, nothing on the ordinary. And then today we had Special Ed Co-op meeting and we had an executive board meeting to discuss the potential for the executive director over there to resign and reapply for her job. And that's not an uncommon practice as we're going to have more of that. And we did some personnel shifts and that was kind of the gist of what was going on there. So we learned that the facility that we thought would be going out at the old care building is now off the table at this time.
All together?
Yeah. There may be another time that comes around for more beds, but the vendor, the original vendor that was interested dropped the proposal. We've got a new vendor. They're interested in doing it at a different location than it sounds like. And so if there is to be this kind of a facility coming our way, it's not going to be now. So, yeah. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Curriculum Review.
Okay, well, on staff development, we did not meet last month and we won't meet again until May 31st. And because all of the funds that were designated for this year have been used, they've been designated. And so we're meeting May 31st for those people that want to do things during the summer. So that's the last, which would be the rollover, I guess, by July 1st. Okay. And then for curriculum review, we had an excellent meeting and we heard from the language arts departments and also science. And the science one was the big report because we've been waiting a long time in Minnesota for new standards, science standards. And so the teachers I know have been waiting a long time too for a new curriculum. And so it was, we had a great report on how the science standards are going to be changing coming up. Now it hasn't been, there've been several readings and I know the teachers are meeting again, the math departments are meeting again in May, I think for, but they're talking about how the frameworks are changing and so for science, it'll be, there's different, even the terminology is changing for the standards. So it's called Dimension One is Science and Engineering Practices. Dimension Two, different cost-cutting concepts and disciplinary core ideas, but it's physical science, life science, earth and space science. And then changing how that is, how they're explaining the different standards. I found it really fascinating. And then what I also thought as I listened to the report was how well our school district is positioned to implement this. Especially when they're talking about the engineering technology being interwoven into the others on how our project lead the way and the STEM program that we have. I think it's not going to be, it's going to be challenging definitely to implement these, but I think it's going to work really well.
You know, since that meeting, we had a science curriculum meeting that Mark and I and the principal sat in with it. Interesting is almost all the new curriculums, notebooks. So it's all online and with a consumable workbook. But so the benefit of that is they can make that book every year up to date. So there's adjustments, different things, you've got the most up to date. They reprint the new consumable workbook as well. And so that's interesting. It doesn't cost less, just so you know. So they get the same amount of money out of you with these subscriptions. And that's kind of the first I've heard is they're not even going to be offering that hard textbook. And I think that's forecast of things to come. The next time we do, you know, a math and all the different cycle, it's going to be a lot of online stuff.
It was also interesting to hear Mr. Holiski, he was talking about some of the honors chemistry and some of the other classes, but he also talked about how colleges are involved in this process too with the science standards. And so they're aware of it and of the new science standards too. And so again, students going into college, wanting to take college classes, those professors in the universities and colleges are aware of these changes as well.
How much time do we get as a school district to implement the standards once they've been approved or adopted?
Well, you know, they're doing it, they're not doing it all across the board all at one time. It's going to be three grade levels per year for, I think that's three years. Yeah. So I think they're starting with 3rd grade and then it was 7th grade and then 5th grade, something like that. Which, and taking the, so that it's in a sequence.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Inadequates and Wellness Policy and Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah. So the wellness committee met last month. Some of the main things we talked about were some of the food changes and a little bit of marketing that's happened down in the cafeteria and just some goals that they're looking forward to for next year. And one of those big things is just continuing to keep fresh food accessible, not only in Kennedy but in all the other schools. And then Jen reported in on their employee wellness challenge that she did during the month of March and said that there was some pretty good participation. And then we also kicked off through Kristin Tool's ALC, there's a couple groups of students helping out with the Three Good Things Initiative again that rolled out last night. The first text went out. So if anyone wants to join in, you still can do that. You text @ThriveFF and then the number is 81010. You'll automatically get a text every Sunday night for the next two weeks to submit your responses. The first one that they did was last fall and they had over 1,200 responses in two weeks. So we're hoping to do that again and Kristin has a better plan of looking at the responses that come in and in relation to our schools and our community. And then Angela Harstead from our PE and Health Department attended the Healthy Schools Summit. That was just a couple of weeks ago and that's something that they do annually. And it's just a variety of different things along the health and wellness spectrum. And she said the conference was excellent. She has a whole list of ideas of things she's planning to implement within her curriculum for next year. But then also brought some ideas back that she wanted to share with some other staff members. And Lance Down in the cafeteria was unable to attend, so she brought back some information for him from that too. So that is good. And then policy has not met. It looks like in our packet tonight, we're going to be discussing one of the policies. And then Buildings and Grounds will be chatting about a little more in our work session tonight.
Any questions for Natalie? Just one question on the summit that Angela went to. Did they talk a lot about like mental health and stuff like that and just what we can do?
Yep. Lots of mental health things and she's going to share all the information in the presentations with me. And then lots on tobacco, the T21 things that are passing. So she said that was one thing that she just, every time she hears it, she just can't hear enough. I mean, it's just continuous reminders and there's always new information coming out. But yeah.
I think the latest is students going into seizures based, they think it's off the tobacco products, the vaping.
They're going to seizures. Overdose on vaping now, is that right? Overdose on nicotine.
I think it's the sophomores, they said 90%, Virginia's 90% of women cigarette or tobacco, there's 20% on the vaping. It's over twice as many.
Is that nationwide?
No, just in Minnesota. It was MSBA, I think.
Yeah. So it's anything from physical activity. One of the sessions she went to, they were teaching like this new dance thing that can be implemented in the classes and yeah, it was awesome.
Any other questions? Thank you. For my report, Lakes Country Service Co-op, we do not meet until Thursday, so I have nothing to report for them. And the Minnesota High School League, they did meet last Thursday, April 4th. And one of the things is they had their lobbyists come and talk to them and this, I thought this was kind of interesting is in the K-12 bills that were completed earlier in the day, language was included in the bill confirms that extracurricular activities is a privilege and not a right. And I don't know why that had to, why there was just kind of must be some feeling that they needed to do that. Maybe because of some things that they've been dealing with, in particular with Minnesota High School League, maybe with parents and stuff. And so they just wanted to include that in the K-12 bill and that did pass. The other thing that Derek Abrams had talked about is that, and I believe last Thursday, most coaches were refreshing their page at Minnesota High School League, is that there was a motion to accept the competitive section placement assessments and that's for the whole state of Minnesota. And so for the 2019, 2020 and 2020, 2021 school years. And so that was approved and is now posted on the league's website. So if people wanted to take a look at that, they can. The other thing that was in for discussion items this time, and they have set for approval for the June 3rd, at least on action items, is basketball for Class 4A section tournament format. They're talking about a shot clock. So that might happen. We'll see. So I kind of figured that's where I would start, is the bigger schools would start it and then we'll see how it trickles down. But it sounds like they're going to start that. The other thing is that cross-country, they are proposing, and I think this would be from the Committee of Cross-Country or whatever, is the three-class proposal. Boys hockey wants to add two weeks and two games to the season. And so they are requesting changes to the bylaws. Boys and girls soccer and boys and girls tennis are both also proposing to go to three classes instead of two. And then volleyball is proposing to go to four classes. So that's just some of the things that were talked about and again, that'll be in the June 3rd for action items. So I don't know if a decision will be made then or if they'll table it and do more discussion and wait until the following year to make it. But that's just some of the interesting things that are being talked about at the Minnesota High School League. And again, one other thing, and Derek Abrams will be here, as we can talk to him a little bit, is about school board training. And it just says, ADs, get out and work with your local school boards.
Tonight's the night. He'll be back.
There we go.
Anything on boys volleyball?
That did not get approved. Yes, a motion to advance boys volleyball was amended to the representative assembly and it failed in a 12 to 7 vote, boys vote. So that is not going to happen.
That's one of the next ones they're, they'll keep pushing spring sport.
They will come back, definitely.
Interesting.
Any questions? And Steve Biggessa is not here and so Superintendent Ness?
I'm going to roll Steve's information and mine into one here. So legislative liaison, every day you're getting notices from MSBA. Lots of things happening. The governor and the House have rather high targets. The senate is a lower target. They're still pushing 3 and 2, some special ed cross-subsidy, reducing paperwork in special ed. Lots of those things are in play. And again, it's kind of like you need to keep active. You need to let your legislature know what you believe in and how you're doing. But it all comes down to the last weekend. It just, they figure everything, so that's kind of where it's at. Meet confer, we had a couple items that I'll mention. You're well aware of the mental health issues at McKinley and some of the behavior issues. That was brought to the table. Some equity in class sections and it's difficult to do because in a, there might be three algebra of two sections and one might be up against band or choir. And so you've got a smaller class there and then the other class. So, but they'd like to see how you do a better job of making sure if you've got 60 kids, ideally it'd be 20, 20, 20. And this way it's more like 15 and 30, 30 and then, you know, whatever the other one would be. So just working on that. And then the other thing they brought up is not for next year, our next year's calendar is set, but look at doing calendars two years old. So when you look at the calendar, it's sort of, you're always looking not only the next year, but the following year. And they're really looking, there's some energy behind spring break or preparing for when there's a music trip and those types of things. How do we make sure, because you know, when there's a music trip, there's 200 kids gone and we try to minimize the number of days, but how can we plan for those days better? And there is a bill that 2021, 21, 22, Labor Day is the 6th and the 7th, so it's really late. There is a bill right now going through that you would be able to start at school early that the previous week. And I can't remember if it's on September 1 or if it's like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday prior to the Labor Day week. Because you still get a long weekend then, all of those things, but that, we'll know at the end of May on that one. One of the, the only other thing I have here is on Friday, we are hosting the Department of Health and Human Services. The Commissioner, Tony Laurie, will be here. They want to visit with, they're coming out of the cities to do, you know, a venture with a model program. And the model program we have is how we work with Otter Tail County, Lakeland and the school district and how we work together to share costs to get mental health, both practitioners and also professionals into our district. So they want to see that. We have a couple of students that are going to be giving presentations. I can only imagine how nervous they'll be in front of a room full of adults, but they, it's on mental health. So sophomore health students will do that. They'll tour a little bit around the building. They only have an hour. It's one of these tight, tight things. So to come in, hear about the program, hear a couple of students, do a little tour, they'll be pushing it, but it's great. The Commissioner of Education is a baby and the governor is here, I believe, the night, on Thursday night. All depending on the 8 to 10 inches of snow that the cities are supposed to get. So whether they get here or not, we'll see, but I think Friday morning should be fine. That is at 10 o'clock if anyone's interested in joining us.
You're going to start, you're starting here?
We're probably starting right here.
I would like to.
Okay.
Does that sound like we're at 3:00?
You know, really it's not a meeting. It's more of a, this deal, so I think Melanie, it's kind of your line of business and Kirby and so we have a couple.
Okay.
Sounds good. That's what I have.
Any questions for Superintendent Ness? Thank you. We have a rest.
Look, you just mentioned State of the City. Is anybody else, I'm going to go. Is anybody else going? Are you going to go there? Right. I might have one extra ticket, maybe two if somebody decides they want to go. Get my number, give me a call.
Hold on for me if you have one.
I will hold it for you for sure. Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, you want to get there early?
I have a, I'm going to try.
Do you want to get there early too because they oversold it?
Well, the weather will be a issue.
Yeah. They gave out more tickets than they have seats, and so they are in the, it's not going to be as good.
But they're doing it also, they're streaming it also, is that correct?
Yes.
Can we get the booth upstairs?
See if he knows somebody.
Moving on to the resolution of acknowledgements. Clerk, do you want to read it?
Sure. Thank you to April Howgie and Jamie Price Anderson for their donations to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals and to Amelia Lamar for the donation of a flute, trumpet, guitar, cello and accessories to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. I offered this resolution and will move for its adoption.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limpke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. And Kirby Anderson.
And Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes for the March 25th School Board meeting, Bills and Treasuries Report. Kirby Anderson.
Yes. Matt Lemke and I did review the bills with Mark Madison prior to this meeting, and we are in good shape financially right now for this time of year. And we did, we reviewed and asked several questions of Mark, and he gave us all the right answers, so we're happy about that. So I recommend the Treasury Report be, it looks good.
Thank you. Item number three, Personnel. Leanne Jenkins.
We have some support staff hires. We have two custodians, Matt Opets and Aaron Cole. That'll just be starting here. Well, Matt already started, Aaron will be starting next week at Roosevelt Education Center, and that's due to some resignations that we've had and some movements within the group itself. Leanne Atchison, she already is a halftime Special Ed paraprofessional at Cleveland. She's now picked up an additional halftime that she approved in a March meeting of position over at our Head Start. So she's a full-time position now. And then Eric Treasure, he is, I recommend him to be hired as our Summer Browns worker. He is currently a senior at our Ferguson Falls High School here, and he would start as soon as school is out. Along as far as resignations, Deb Carlson, Cafeteria over Cleveland School. And then a certified staff hire, Barb Zempel, she's part-time Special Ed teacher picking up just some extra students that came in at, kind of towards the end of the year here. And so that is my recommendations for hires and along with resignations for the board.
Item number four is a notice of desire to negotiate from the Ferguson Falls Education Association. With that, do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved. Now, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. We have no old business. Moving on to new business, we have a revision to the current School Board policy, 515, protecting, no protection and privacy of pupil records, student record, records, public notice. Do we have a motion to approve that revision?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I think the key item, well, first of all, the school board members went through some training, brought, this was brought to their attention. Our current policy was allowing student names, parent names, telephone numbers, email addresses, very, very lenient, if you will, or, you know, very open. So the recommendation is to go to the name and address of both the student and the parent. If someone's requesting that information, they can actually do snail mail, which is less intrusive, and a parent can make a decision on whatever, whatever they're doing. And we're also still allowing, obviously, information for rosters on sports programs and different things there. But, so it's a, it's a pretty dramatic change, although it's, it's just a few line items that you cross out of a, of a policy, but it's, it's quite a change, and, but I think it's a positive change for our, for our parents protecting students and parents.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, we have a resolution on discontinuing and reduction of educational positions and programs. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 544 adopted a resolution on January 28th, 2019, directing the administration to make recommendations for reduction in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the School Board, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 544, as follows, the following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued. K-12 position is one FTE, elementary class kindergarten, class size reduction. Support staff, two FTEs, Special Education Paraprofessionals. Do we have, will somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll start at the end.
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to comment here. So two reasons, there's a federal program where we use, you know, class size reduction. We're able to then access dollars through the federal corium. And, and then also to, right now, we're at 10 sections. Elaine, you're one at the door. So we're at 10 sections, reducing to nine sections, and then we'll do the prove it game here. Prove that we need, we have more students, and then we'll look at adding back. It does indicate right now that we probably will be back at, at 10 sections in kindergarten. That's, the, the Special Ed paraprofessionals, those are parents that are with senior students, so it, so at this point, we'd be reducing based on need.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Kirby Anderson.